Okay, if we could start with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, welcome. So Rich, your eagle is broken? Oh, the wing.
Oh.
It must have fallen. I hope that's not a harbinger of anything. Okay, Rich, you are up with the financial report. Okay.
Rich, can you turn on your mic? For fifty-eight percent of the fiscal year, we've got sixty-one percent of our budget operating and about fifty-two percent of our operating expenditures. So we're pretty close to being right on target. The, we got another chunk of money from the state for January for income tax receipts. The distribution of the local income tax revenues that come in period, that come in slowly because of people, their, the receipts from over delayed tax returns, late filers, all kinds of things like that. So we will continue to get dribbles coming in, but we got a pretty good chunk of money. It's a hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars this, this month from that. That's it.
I think we're still ahead of the game in terms of expectations for revenue.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay. Any questions for Rich? Okay, um, I'm gonna ask, I'm sure you've all read the town manager's report unless there's any questions, just have that entered into the record and move on. Okay, save voice, okay.
Yeah.
Excellent. Public comments. I see Mr. Evangelista. I don't know if you have any public comments that you would like to make, but right now you're the only member of the public, but I want to put the floor out to you if you have any, any comments.
Thank you so much for offering the floor, but I don't.
All right. Okay, no.
So sorry for us not having any audience, you decided to join.
Thank you for joining us. Appreciate that. Wonderful. Um, so we'll just go into council discussions. The first one is Governor Moore's Housing Expansion and Affordability Act. Enjoy, you and I can, can talk about this together with our colleagues. So the governor has put forth housing, a set of housing bills, three of them that combine, that, that are, one of them is this Housing Expansion and Affordability Act, the other one has to do with rental stabilization, or rent, rent rates stabilization, other one is money offered to incentivize the building of affordable housing. The, the, there's different parts to the Housing and Expansion and Affordability Act, as you can see in Senate Bill 484, where depending on the current zoning of the community, so for us, it's single-family homes, there's an automatic allowance of missing middle housing to be built in the communities that are within, right now, one mile of a rail station. And as long as it's within one mile of a rail station, missing middle can be built as long as that project has at least twenty-five percent of affordable housing associated with it. So we know it here in this county as moderately priced dwelling units. So we're learning more about this. We're getting our questions answered. We've been in touch with both the governor's office and also the Maryland Municipal League to, to get our questions answered. And it's always about coming to the, at the end of the day, to ensure that, that what would be built in the town is within what we would expect from, in terms of congruence with our building code. So those really were, were these questions and clarifications are, are coming out. I don't know if today, Joy, because I think you had your, your meeting earlier today, there's a lot of amendments being talked about, thrown about, and I don't know where, where things stand at the moment, if you, if you wouldn't mind giving an update on that.
Yes, it's, I actually didn't attend the meeting because it was in person in Annapolis.
Oh.
Look at that. But as far as I know, where, there has not yet been a hearing scheduled on any of the housing bills. There have been some discussions about changes, potential changes to this legislation. You know, there's a lot of numbers flying around, but I am aware, and I think people are on the record about this, that counties are interested in shortening the distance allowed around transit. So I think that is probably something that, given the power our county has, it's likely that the, that projects, that the distance would be shortened so that it would be less than a mile.
Yes.
There are other provisions that, you know, a number of other municipalities are concerned about because they have, so there are three areas where projects could be approved. One type of project would be close to transit. Another type of project would be, you know, using some county or state-owned property that doesn't really impact us. But there are other municipalities that are concerned about that. So just to make a long story short, it is likely that there will be some changes to the provisions of this. It, it's my impression that the administration is amenable to making some changes. They're interested in getting this passed. I don't think, I mean, MML is also, in theory, supportive of this legislation, and they're just trying to represent municipalities' interests to ensure that we continue to have home rule and zoning control where possible. So that's what I know now.
Okay, so we, we have, Todd and I have been having, and Joy, we've been having various calls with, we had a call with the governor's office, we had a call with MML. In, in the spirit of, you know, entertaining different amendment options out there, we, we were specifically honing in on a part of the legislation that relates to so-called unreasonableness. And let me make sure that I'm bringing this up here. It essentially says, "A local jurisdiction may not impose any unreasonable limitation or requirements on a qualified project" under the subtitle. But that, I'm sorry, I'm trying to say that is stricter than, no, 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 sorry. Under the subtitle, "Including limitations on or requirements that are concerning height, setback, bulk parking, loading dimensional or area or similar requirements." There's a lot to unpack in, in that particular phrasing, but what we are concerned about is what does unreasonable mean? For example, would, would there be a possibility that builders would want to build in, not just in, in the town, but other areas that are, you know, also under the umbrella of this particular gubernatorial legislation where the developer will say, "That's unreasonable. I can't make money because of your particular building code." And therefore, I'm going to say it's unreasonable, right? So unless it's defined, it's, it's a bit, it's a bit a wide, wide berth that, that folks are given. So the MML was interested in hearing, you know, proposals for what that, what unreasonableness might look like. And we asked Ron to put forth some, some proposed wording that I'd like to go over with you all tonight and see if we perhaps, as, you know, when we're all on, on the same page, propose that to MMLs earlier or sooner rather than later. So presently, as you can see in the, the 44, it says, as I mentioned, "Local jurisdiction may not impose any unreasonable limitation or requirements." What, what Ron is proposing as, as language is, "A local jurisdiction may not impose any limitation or requirements on a qualified project" under this subtitle, that is stricter than that applicable to other permissible housing types for the zone. So
Do we, are we, do we have this?
No, I did not send this along.
Okay.
Essentially, it's, it's an intent to take the unreasonableness, what, what section is that? Line twenty?
Seven, five oh five.
Seven, five oh five. There you go.
Got it.
So taking out unreasonable and effectively saying that, any, important, may not impose any limitation or requirements requirement on a qualified project under the subtitle that is stricter than, than that applicable to other permissible housing types for the zone. So if whatever we allow for single-family homes, we can't be stricter on a multifamily property. It, it could be, yes, it could be, so, so, um, that is something that I wanted to, to talk about, like, is that, is that reasonable? Are we boxing ourselves in by saying that in the future, we don't want anything more strict for multifamily housing as we would for single? Because again, it goes to height, setback, bulk, parking, loading dimensional area, which we don't know exactly what that means, or similar requirements. There are, and I'll tell you before you go, there's a, Ron was kind enough to send a letter that was written by the MNCPPC in favor of this legislation. I just got it this afternoon.
I'm sorry, the MN?
The, the Maryland National Capitol Park Planning, MNCPCC. They wrote a letter supporting, but with amendments, and they're actually asking that the, the the wording here, make sure that I go back, loading dimensional or area or similar requirements be taken out in terms of, just forget that they exist and just have height, setback, bulk, and parking. That's their supposed amendment that, I don't know where, what's going to happen with that. Of many, I'll forward you the, the, their document after this meeting. But I think what I wanted to do is just talk more about, A, how do we feel about this particular proposal? Things are moving because it's a ninety-day legislative session. And are, are, how do you all feel about this proposed way of going after the unreasonableness? Phrasing, yeah.
First of all, I think this is actually a really important issue. And, and it took me a long time to get my arms around this. I had to go to the actual language to read it because the summary that was presented really did not stitch this together. And I also frankly, from the debriefing you gave Irene of the conversation you and Todd had with the state representative, I felt that that, that state representative was somewhat disingenuous because they've cited the kind of thing they wanted to go after, but the language is much more
Right.
much more controlling than he implied, at least as I read them.
That's, that's right.
And so you're quite right to refer to the language in on, on well, right, page ten, thank you. The, right, on page ten. But, but recognize that in that, where it says, "A local jurisdiction may not impose any unreasonable limitation or requirements," that is a defined term. And it's defined back on page six, line seventeen, under N, "Unreasonable limitation or requirement includes any limitation or requirement that has a substantial adverse impact on the viability of an affordable housing development in a qualified project, or to the degree of affordability of affordable dwelling units in a qualified project." When I read that, I said, "Wait a minute." What they're saying is that the only factor to be considered here is whether or not the regulation impinges on the ability to put in the affordable housing. You know, and if a developer were to say, "Well, if I have to live without regulation, then that's going to make my provision of the affordable housing unit difficult, or it's going to be adversely affected."
That's exactly right.
Then, then it basically wipes out every other zone, every other ordinance we have. Right. I mean, it, it trumps, I hate using that term these days, but anyway, it trumps, it trumps water management, it trumps, you know, waste treatment, it trumps canopy, it trumps space, it trumps everything. So to me, I, I guess my, my, my request is that we make this and say, "Wait a minute here. This is, this is actually a very radical absolutist argument that says, 'We, as a municipality, have no power to balance different objectives that our town has.'" And instead, there is only one attribute that matters here, which is whether or not it's affordable. And, and
Which, which by the way, we don't, like, as you said, that, that then trumps everything.
Yeah.
It doesn't, nothing else.
Nothing else matters. Well, that, so, go ahead.
It's structured right now, whether they intended it or not.
To me, I, I think what you're suggesting would be our language is fine. I don't know whether it sits better, what, the language that you proposed essentially sort of slices out the definition. So this definition sits there unconnected to the text.
Yeah, I think it should be taken out too.
I think, but I think this definition should not stay in this, I think, you know. And I'm sorry, I'm on my high horse here. That, that definitely should not go, and, and I think there should be something, either the language you're thinking about goes in here, or it, or more better, it says that the unreasonableness has to take into account the other objectives and obligations of, of our governments. It cannot be something that sits on its own terms. That's the only thing that matters. So I, I think there's a real serious issue here, and it's gotta be, we have to get this to our delegation very quickly. Those are the people we really know and have to count on.
Well, Senator Wallstriker is a co-sponsor of this Senate bill. So that was the other part of it, to, to get feedback from you so that I can start making these calls to our delegation.
Yeah, because you said you know his agent, right?
Yep.
We also know Jeff personally, so we can
Yep.
do course, talk to him directly.
Absolutely, absolutely.
I don't know if he had thought of Chris putting all this together.
I don't know either.
I, I kind of go to a baseline of all of this that's, that is kind of what you spoke about before, which is the baseline, the, the benchmark for reasonableness is it's no more stringent than what we allow for for our own, for residential, single-family residential homes. I think that's our baseline. You don't, you know, so the reasonableness is, is that we, and it takes into account, you know, we, what we allow for a single-family home is the same thing that we would allow for a, you know, some multifamily. And, and use that as the, I mean, I, that's, that to me is a reasonable limitation. And the way it's written now, it erases that limitation. So, I mean, to me, that, that ought to be our baseline. I also suggest that we propose language. We ought to make sure that our delegation understands the issue, why we find this definition so offensive. So in case our language, for whatever reason, doesn't work or flawed or has its own problem, they cannot therefore disregard the substance that we're really focused on, which is this definition being so radical.
Okay.
Other than that, it's a great bill.
Yeah. It will pass at some, some form, it will pass, yes.
I also, I did, I think, did I say somewhere that the MML was saying that they might not only reduce the diameter, the diameter, the
Perximity.
Right, the area around the metro stop, but also that they would lower the
Affordable housing requirement from twenty-five percent down to whatever, fifteen?
Fifteen, okay.
For the, the affordable housing, the affordable housing component of it, instead of it being twenty-five percent, it would, it could be lower to our MPD.
But if someone were to build a duplex, would they still be required to make one of the units?
Yes, one of the two units.
If they want to be a qualified project.
Right.
That's the other.
Yes.
When you look at the couple, you gotta be careful with the definition of qualified projects too.
Oh, yes, no, we, that is
Yeah, it has, it's the affordable housing that, the crux is on that. And what Joy let me know about the eighty-six percent of the funding for helping, you know, this type of development through is going to Baltimore City. And that, that
And there's a whole separate section about Baltimore in here.
So the intent is, that's where this, the, the housing will, will be built. But, you know, we have to just make sure that, that all these unintended consequences are addressed.
Yeah, and I, I think the other issue here is that it's a, if this language, I can imagine we will be, there'll be pushback with a lot of people saying exactly this kind of thing effectively, it won't make that much difference to the town. That may be true because it'll be so hard for developer to make money if one out of two or one out of three hasn't, right, right. But if we were to acquiesce and accept this language in this bill because we don't think it will really affect us very much, we've crossed the Rubicon.
Yeah.
Then when the developers come back in a few years and say, "You know, we haven't really been able to develop any affordable housing, but any kind of housing is better, so, so let's build on this other bill, but instead of fifteen percent, drop it to five percent, or, or only have it applicable to
And what if the Corso gets redeveloped?
I'm sorry?
Yeah, of course.
Of course it gets redeveloped.
Exactly what I was thinking.
Yeah.
It's, you know, the, the place that we can be impacted, Corso falls through or
Except if they decrease the proximity to point seven five miles or perhaps, then it won't be that
It's a different zone.
Right.
It's not zoned R sixty either. So it's a different, but
Right, but that's what I'm saying.
That, that's, that is what we're saying.
Right.
Hey, what I'm saying is, we, we have to be aware that it's, this is the time for us to make the point, is what I'm trying to do.
Right, so other than the proposed language and ensuring that this unreasonable qualified project, is there any other aspect of this right now that, that, that strikes you? There, there are some other things that we've brought up as well, just in terms of our questions, but for now.
I think it's fair to say that it's unlikely it's going to make a dramatic impact on the town because of the economics of this.
This is true. Very difficult to make
But the point is, we have to, we, we, we we can't let, we can't be sloppy just because of that. You know, we have
No, and there are, you know, municipalities out there with zoning authority who are just as impacted as we are. So just because you have zoning authority, that doesn't matter for this piece of legislation. This trumps their, their, their authority. So I, I'm confident that with MML and the different concerns that are being brought up, that, you know, that we will be able to get some stuff through.
But I think we, as I understand this, we are not expecting that the county is going to be very, in other words, the county's got to say
Not expecting the county, at least Council President Fritzen has told us that does not expect, they're still studying the bills, the House bill, the Senate bill, but they do not expect to weigh in, and that's likely because there's a good portion of the, of the current county council that's in support of, of these efforts.
Well, there's the Juando Mink proposal that I think is pretty similar.
Although that's no longer in play.
Right.
Yeah.
Is there, um, are there, are we going to see another zoning text amendment within the county, or do you think the council is waiting for this and then they will?
Well, it's funny you say that. So today, there was a an announcement from the planning department that on February the twenty-second, Montgomery Planning Staff will brief the planning board on the Attainable Housing Strategies Initiative. It, I don't know exactly when on February twenty-second, but definitely will be tuning in. And there's an expectation that anyone who wants to testify in front of the planning board on March twenty-first. So we will have basically a couple of weeks to digest this and get our thoughts together. So look out for a work session around this time so that we can formulate our thoughts and, and figure out what we want to say. I do not know what they're going to give as an update, but the fact that they're looking for a planning board, that is to say, thoughts right away. This again goes a little bit differently than what Council President Fritzen told us in December, where he said that, you know, "No, it's likely not gonna be, you know, hitting us for a while." I, I don't think that, I think everything is just gonna start to, to, in the run-up to next election, so.
Just one, one other comment about my views about this, just to be clear to my colleagues. I'm actually really strongly in favor of allowing the multifamily housing in the town, all right? But I also believe that we will not get resident support if we cannot make the representation along the lines of what you stated, Rich.
Right.
If we cannot assure people that, if someone says they can put in a quad, you know, a quad and go lot line to lot line, and basically have a much larger footprint than a single-family home, we're dead. Nobody's gonna want any of the changes. So this is the, this is, and you're the one, Irene, who brought this up, you know, back in the fall, and that's, it's, it, to me, it's the most potent argument for why we need to hold to this. It's not because we don't want it, but it's actually because many of us really do want it, but we also want to have a buy-in from the residents. So that's, that's, that's the motivation behind all this. And I think it's important to, to, to always emphasize that so that, that people who would otherwise be concerned about the town's position understand that this is not because we're trying to put up a wall, we're actually trying to take down a wall, but we want to do it in a way that gains popular support.
And since I'll be reaching out to the state delegation, reminding them once again that it's important we get some, some clarification per the technical amendment that we asked about in December, that this, this happened.
Yeah.
Yeah, so. Todd, I don't know if there, maybe you've texted me. I don't know if I've missed anything here. I, I feel like I know how to proceed at this point with MML. We'll, we'll reach out to them tomorrow. I will reach out to the state delegates. I will forward you MNCPCC's comments on, and it's a lot to digest, which I have not yet, but I, I'll give you a little summary. Just came in four-thirty this afternoon. So Ron, do you have any other thoughts or comments for now?
Perhaps it doesn't need to be said, but the approach I recommended here is consistent with how we handled ADUs, where we've said, if there's an ADU in a detached building, because it's a dwelling unit, we're imposing the same setbacks that we apply on a main building that's used for single-family. So this follows that same approach where we're treating everything the same.
Yep. Okay, well, stay tuned. This will be a big discussion. Dave, did you have, were there, okay, just want to make sure I get to everybody. Thank you, everyone. The next up is the Parks Department. I don't mean to laugh, it's just, it's one complication after another, but moving forward.
Rich, if you wanted to
The, the, Irene and I attended today an in-person meeting, as we have every other week, with our partners over at the Parks Department, so that was good. Let me do my best to pull it together and summarize it, and Irene, please chime in or add, or subtract, as the case may be. First of all, in terms of the legal documents, the, we were told today by Chris Conklin that he's been told by the county attorney's office that they will send a marked-up version of the draft agreement back to the developers before the end of this week. There seemed to be relative confidence that a way can be found to
Um, there seemed to be relative confidence that a way can be found to. Uh, basically still permit the payments that the developers need to be able to build the garage. In a way that is timely for them, but. Adheres to the requirements that this still be seen as a real estate deal where the county can only make a few specific payments at different times and cannot do the month-to-month. Uh, reimbursement of expenses as would be case if they were in control of the project, so. To be seen. Um, we pointed out, we we are not able to make progress ourselves in terms of. Our contribution to the garage until we see that agreement. Um, Chris Conklin had said a couple of months ago that. He didn't have any problem in sharing drafts of these agreements as they were developed, but but um I thought an NDA would have to be in place. We then undertook to draft the NDA because we felt that the county would probably stall and take a long time with that. Well, they were, what's now turned out to be the case is we only learned today, nobody had informed us prior prior to this. That uh Clifford Royalty, the county attorney, does not believe an NDA can even be signed by the county in this case because the project is already in the public domain. On the face of it, I know we have a lawyer here, that's, that's nonsense, you could obviously have an NDA which focuses on specific aspects of anything. And carve that out from general knowledge and and keep that confidential, um but in any event, that was what uh royalty said. So um, the position the county currently holds is that they have to complete their agreement with the. Developers and only when it's final will then be something that we can all, the rest of us partners can see. The point that we made at the meeting today is, well, fine, but you're taking the risk that. Since the town has to flange up our million seventy-six thousand dollars in a certain way against. The payments that the county is going to make for the garage, if you guys agree to something doesn't work for us. There's a problem. Uh, so we, that was, you know, oh, well, we can amend our agreement, well, I mean, the whole, that's monstrosely inefficient, so. That was not a very satisfactory result, other than to note that. The county is at least marking up the agreement and sending it back to the developers, and we hope that'll close some of the gaps in their own. In their own thinking, you know, their own positions, and we can get closer to having a final agreement. The other agreement that we're waiting for is the execution of the interim agreement, which will permit the Parks Department. To start funding the reimbursement of the landscape architect uh for the work they're doing, the design. Uh, and this is something the Parks Department is doing on their own, they have not asked the town to participate or contribute to the funding at this point, so that's fine. But it hasn't been signed yet either, but everyone seems to feel it's very close and will be signed very shortly. So that's status of the legal side. The other side is the planning for the parks themselves, and um. Uh, frankly, uh Irene and I had to be very proactive over the last couple of calls. Uh, to make clear that the town really had to be fully in the mix in this, otherwise it was obvious that the developer and the Parks Department are kind of running away with all the changes and. You know, we're kind of amused when we said, wait a minute, we're paying for half of this, we better be at the table for these discussions. Uh, so one of the reasons why we had today's meeting and it was in person was because of our insistence that we had to really be involved in looking at this. And what they showed us was um a new core, I'll call it a core project, core plan. Which fits inside of the budget that was allocated and went into the request to approval by the county council. Uh, and uh, that's a parks budget, um which, if you were to include all the soft costs and um. And and also the overhead that the county, that the Parks Department is paying for themselves, is a nine point four million dollar budget. If you take out the the park supervision, it's eight point eight million. Um, in that eight point eight is still utilities work, soft costs and actual hard costs, which is only like six million, get down to that number. So what they're basically proposing is that conceptually, what they want to show residents when they go back out. Is here's what we can do for the budget that we were given by the county. In addition to that, here are amenities which we have not been able to be able to put into the core project. But which, we're telling you, here's what the amenities are, and here's how much they cost, and if we find a way to get the money. For all those additional amenities or some number of them, then they can go into the project. Um, speaking just personally, I I don't, I don't have a problem with that. Conceptually, in the sense that since we anticipate, we know their cost overruns and we know the town is going to be asked and we ought to speak candidly to residents. It is probably helpful to be able to say what in fact would be purchased for the additional money the town commits, so it's probably helpful clarification to know that. Additional money can go for these amenities specifically, and that will give people a concrete sense of it, so that that may actually be helpful. But what we want to be sure of is at the core. Is in itself something that really is sensible, and uh what I mean by that is that, first of all, it has been scrubbed and. Some amenities and things that are very important that are in there, such as benches, are. Good benches, but don't have to be gold-plated. You know, cast in concrete stuff that actually ends up sopping up a lot of money, which otherwise might actually be used for one of the amenities that otherwise is chopped out. And put into the supplemental cluster, right? Um, so, and and the other, the other aspect we we emphasized was a matter of tone, that we don't want the residents to be told. Well, this is all we can do, and we can't do anything else unless, you know, somehow we get more money. Because, and we pointed this out, we don't want a situation where residents begin to feel, oh, my gosh, well, I really wanted amenity X. And someone else really wanted amenity Y, and now it doesn't look like we're going to get them, well, first they might not want the park at all. Or else they begin to, people get upset, saying, well, I want my amenity, you know, and I think we want to avoid. That kind of squabbling, uh so so. Net of it is that we will be getting within. The 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 landscape architects were on the phone and they have to do some further work, but we will get a do- a document probably within a week.
Yeah.
Which will set out exactly what's in the core, what that cost is, what are the other amenities and what each of those costs are. What we were told today was that roughly speaking. Uh, if you added in all the amenities, that would include the water feature, a stage. And also an exercise area on Lot Ten, those are the three big ones that are not in the core. I'm sorry?
Your ice rink.
Oh, yeah, right, right. Uh, that, all that together is something like three point seven million dollars.
Right.
Additionally, right, right. Um, and uh, the um. You know, that's when it's going to come back to us to have a conversation about, okay, is this the time for us to. Seriously consider what could be the additional funding we provide, and if so, what's the basis of providing that additional funding? Um, the um, uh, two other moving pieces which are important. Um, one is, this base budget does not consider the additional half million dollars that came to the town last year. So that potentially, and that's money that has been from the state, but it's channeled through us. And uh, we initiated a discussion with the developers today that we may want to just apply that to the park, so that automatically would lift the ceiling. By half a million dollars if we applied that that way. The other is that they confirmed today that if in the utility work. They take out the undergrounding of the wires in Forty-Sixth Street, that'll save eight hundred thousand dollars. Uh, now, what we, Irene pointed out, and she's actually right, we have to be careful that there won't be. Some of the utility work that was elsewhere may have been underbudgeted, and so that might sop up some of that eight hundred thousand, but there should still be some net savings, we would assume. So both those things could potentially raise. What can be afforded within the core before we talk about any supplemental contributions to the town. Um, and uh, and then in terms of what the town does, we have to decide, and as you know, uh, we have essentially about two million dollars of. ARPA-derived money, uh which we're just sitting on, uh which we could potentially apply. But exactly how and what frame is what I think we'd all want to discuss and think through very carefully. But uh, uh, I take a point that Irene made and made before, which is, we may really be approaching having. To advance the discussions on this relatively soon. Because when these meetings are with the residents and they're all thinking about this. Um, if we want them to think broadly about how the problem can be solved, and that includes additional money, not just. You know, which amenity do we want, then I think they have to have a notion of what. The council could be potentially wanting to consider, uh and asking the residents to to opine on, so all this may verbal. You know, over the next few months, in in terms of timing, uh, uh, they said that um. Uh, they would still like to be able to hit a site plan submission by September. Um, and uh, that would be great, I think we should encourage them and hope they can do that. Um, they, and and the other thing that's helpful here is that Midi, Figueroa, Figueroa, who's now the head of the department. Was was said in the past, that the 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 OM of the Parks Department has been to never go back to the county council for a supplemental. We we live with the budget we're given, but then she said, not this case, we know this case, we're going to have to go back. And so I think what she's really handling the saying is, look, you know, if we know the town is going to be putting in chunk more. More will be expected of us, and if it's sort of managed in the right way, we could probably, so I I took some confidence from that statement, which is very clear. Uh, and and I begin to speaking personally, not not for Irene. I'm hopeful that we can end up with a financing package that really does include all the amenities we want. And and gets the community really excited about the whole park. And not a situation where residents begin to feel like their amenity has been chopped out, but someone else is in, which I think we want to avoid. At the end of the day, when you think about the grand scheme of any of this, three point seven million dollars is just not a whole lot of money, my my humble view about life. Montgomery County with its wealth and its budget.
Do you get a sense that they still view this as kind of the, what I'll call the Keystone Park of Bethesda? I, it's it's the premier, gonna be the premier park.
I I think it's, that's a very good point, I think, I think that's very much Midi's view. I think she's quite political about it in a good way, I think this is, this is going to be my legacy, you know, it's something that we'd love to have heard Mark Elrich say, but he never has said it.
Right.
Uh, Mike Riley got on board, but Mike was, you know, afraid to leave, I think Midi is more. Yeah, this is, this is really gonna be good, this is, I can, I want to be there for this ribbon cutting, you know?
Yeah.
I'm not sure her whole staff feels that, well, there's a huge bureaucratic heaviness to this that I think we both felt today, but I. Yeah, let's let's get this done, and let's make this a really great park.
Do you think that the staff is viewing it from the standpoint of that, that it's a visionary project versus it's a project to be regulated? I mean, the typically bureaucratic bureaucratic staff, when they. When they're presented with options for things, can look at it in one way, oh, this is going to be good, and it's going to be visionary, the other way is. Well, I need to think about this in terms of what it's gonna, how how we regulate it. So is it?
I don't know if it gives any sense about that.
I I, my gut reaction to that is, I think there's a little bit of jadedness, right, there's a lot of exciting projects uh proposed throughout the county. And um, you know, you 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 bump up against like, oh, we're putting in things that are hard to maintain. Or putting in things that, you know, after with stormwater management, like that came up two times today in the meeting, like. By the way, this budget does not take into account the stormwater management needs yet, so the, you know, they mentioned it a couple of times, so. Whatever the price tag for that is, so there's, part of me is like, well, when you're, when you're in there and you're responsible for one or two or three of those items. There's a little bit of like, yeah, okay, I've been here before and, you know.
Yes, I I that's, I think that's what, but.
So.
Oh, there's one, I'm sorry, good.
I was just, I was just gonna say the um. To the point about this being the premier park in the area, I will say, if you, you know, on a Sunday, ride up, ride your bike up Beach Drive towards Rockville when it's closed. There are a lot of very, very nice parks as you go up like through Kensington and through that area, so. Although this is certainly slated to have more features and I think more types of public use, um. If you think about where we are now in this area, in the adjacent Bethesda area. Given the density, we don't honestly have nearly as nice uh outdoor play facilities as many, many other places in Montgomery County, Maryland.
You're right about that, and I I would add a a point that's true, but the economic case of this, which is really central, you know, we're, there there's a lot going. Farm women's market, and it's a real symbiotic relationship. A a market that really is a food emporium and attracts people will bring more people into the park. A better park will attract more people to the farm women's market.
Right, right.
And 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 we want the farm women's market to be successful, we really do, we do not want that expansion to fail, uh so. I think there's that that economic development point is something we need to emphasize.
And we, we, and it also reminds me, I think it would not. It would probably be wholess to put on our list of things to make sure that we talk to. Um, the county folks about how unbelievably restrictive the water park rules are in Montgomery County, Maryland, which is. I think why there is only one right now out in Germantown, because the, as we experienced when we visited Virginia, the sheer number of tests and type of tests that are required. For the water, it it is, to your point about how the the regulatory nature of this, it's. It has clearly been prohibitive of building these parks in other parts in the county.
Right, yeah. Two design points to make, one is, there was a sense that there are some of these features which are more important to 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 set up and hardwire early on, like water feature and. And a stage area, whereas exactly what goes on to the portion of Lot Ten, which is not going to be the dog park, could be resolved down the road, so. There may be some flexibility in that, the other one, which which uh Irene had not highlighted, and she said on a call last week, but it came up again today. Um, they do envision currently what I'll call is a pathway entrance into the park. At the, starting at the corner of Willow and Forty-Sixth Street. Uh, so I think previously in all the plans, you would have felt as a resident that you had to walk down Willow. Turn left at the Wunaf to go into that space between the farm women's market and the park. Uh, did I pronounce that properly? Thank you, that's as good as a guest doesn't enjoy. Vincent, did I do all right? Anyway, um, uh, the um, uh, and then obviously people would walk down Leland and either go into the park from that side or go into Lot Ten. What uh, the Parks Department seems to care very strongly about is to add. A passageway which would start at the corner of Willow and Forty-Sixth Street. And come down the berm, basically, uh, there's still going to be. Um, cast benches there, which in the sort of to form a creative amphitheater. But where there'd be some gaps in those benches, there'd be a path that would allow people to walk down into the, into the ellipse area, into the green area. Uh, so that's something which I think was, just want to note, I I I was initially concerned about it because I was concerned about the cost. And I didn't want some big fancy, you know, entranceway.
Stone arch.
But, thank you, exactly, but if it's a path and it's not ADA compliant, because they have other ways to have it ADA compliant, I personally am not so concerned, I know.
Did you say there is, there's, the, uh, there is going to be a dog park still, or?
Yes, that's, that's part of the core.
That's what I thought. Two, one for large and the other one for small, um, my concern about the entryway there is I can't tell what the acoustics are going to be. So if there is a performance, is it, is it allowing for more booming noise to go through that corner? Um, where there might be some some residents.
Probably ask about that, yeah.
So.
They have, they have reduced the height of the.
Right.
Drop by two feet, from seven feet down to five feet, uh by by tilting the ellipse up very gradually.
It's a three, three percent grade.
The ellipse will tilt up two feet. And so when it reaches the back of the of the, toward Forty-Sixth Street, it'll only be five feet below.
Below grade.
Below grade instead of seven feet, but they did that not so much for the path, but to cut costs. If at seven feet, they would have to put a retaining wall and a fence, so I would, I think that's our dark, that's not a good thing to do.
So, to be continued.
To be continued, but it may, it may be pretty pertinent for us this spring, and we may have to have a lot of discussions with residents.
With residents, yeah, definitely.
So is there, so given that uh site plan that they're projecting for release in September, do you have a sense of timing when? Um, you know, Parks Department and everyone else would come back to residents, um?
They have to be doing it this spring, you know, April, May, June timeframe, because they have to get the results of that and a final work before they can put into the site plan. The the other thing too is that we were, you know, um, AYA mentioned again the uncertain. Real estate environment with interest rates and so on, but. The the representative for Bernstein itself, Chuck Hathaway, was actually quite robust and said, no, we're ready to go, you know, we we want this project, so that's good to hear. Now, we, we want this project. That was good to hear.
Okay, thank you. And if there's any questions, I'll move on to the next one, which is Zimmerman. So the, you know, good news on Zimmerman is that paperwork's in order. Uh, we're, you know, good. Finally, after all these years waiting. Uh, however, uh, you know, uh, I I got this statistic yesterday, I think, from from Todd, who got it from John. In sixty days, December into January, we got thirteen inches of rain in the town. Um, and that all got diverted. A lot of it got diverted, uh, if you will, to to Zimmerman by design. Uh, which simply the storm drain system cannot handle these type of anything that's more than a ten year storm. It just, just can't handle it. And there was a um, a a sinkhole that developed in the center of of a small sinkhole. But a sinkhole, I I I called it landscape depression, um, you know, but it is a sinkhole. Uh, by all, by all accounts. Um, it took about three weeks for W S S C to come in to check their. To check their um, infrastructure. Um, they poured some, some cement on, on the pipes. And then filled the, with soil on top of it to. Put, put some cement on it.
Where was the sinkhole? Where, where, where was it in?
Did, was, I thought there was a plan for the Zimmerman Park improvement to have some sort of a French drain or some other. Drywall or something? Am I remembering that incorrectly?
Drywall or or French drain isn't gonna fix this amount of water that's coming through. Keep in mind for the Purple Line project, right, like that big pipe, um, where all that water is being diverted. And then going to to towards Lynn, you know what I mean? And that's why there's the Cochrane Run stabilization project in play. It's just a lot of water coming through. Um, and. We're, we're at a point where we have to think about whether we still want to continue with the project. Um, as, as it's currently laid out, right? Zimmerman is a designated floodplain. Uh, the infrastructure underneath is, let's say, patchwork at best. No, there are no plans to replace any of the infrastructure underneath Zimmerman Park. And uh, what, what Dave found out was that we did get the W S S C work permit. But the trees that were going to be planted on the, where that that sidewalk bump out along Maple. When it goes, you know, from, from um, say Black, Blackthorn all the way through. Uh, cannot plant those trees there, um, because it is too near the infrastructure. Um, so that also kind of affects our, they came back and said, we'll give you this permit, but you can't put the. You can't put those trees there as you wanted to. Um, so a few things to kind of think about and and. Uh, discuss as a group, because I, it's unclear what the, what the state is of the infrastructure underneath the. Underneath the Zimmerman Park. So do we continue as, as we, as the design called for? Um, risking the possibility that, that, you know, could get flooded again. Um, or, or, or a pipe could uh, cause issues again. Uh, or do we come up with some sort of, you know, approach, take some amenities, take others, you know, kind of. Um, continue to monitor, go forward and do the whole thing, you know, so there, that's what we wanted to discuss tonight. What's, what's the?
When I, 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 I don't know if you, Dave sent around the schematic. And it looks to me like the, the sinkhole was in the part that's gonna, was gonna be the grassy area of the park.
Yes.
And um, so to me, it's, it's. If you're gonna get a sinkhole, that's the place you'd want to get. It's, you know, it doesn't interfere with, it's not, it's not gonna disturb a sidewalk that we put in or anything like that. It'll just be a depression in a field. So I guess my question for, for, for staff is, is that if we wanted to go ahead and pursue. The elements of this plan, certain elements of it, like the sidewalk that goes all the way through. And just, just do that portion, um, and maybe some of the landscaping on, on some of the sides. Does that really, what, if we went ahead with that. What effect would a sinkhole in the green space have on that infrastructure that we put in? In other words, you know, we can put it in and it'll, it'll be fine. Uh, nothing's gonna happen to the sidewalk, nothing's gonna happen to the benches that we put in. Nothing's gonna happen to the little picnic area that we have, nothing's gonna happen to the trees that we plant. It'll just be a depression in the green space.
Assuming it's gonna happen in that same spot.
Well.
And not a lot, a lot along the way.
The way, the way I understand that infrastructure there, it's pipes with gravel around it, right? Essentially. Right, and they're all, right, right, and they're back. So you're gonna have, you're, you're gonna have depressions in that area and you're almost irrespective of what you do. That water's gonna flow along the sides of those pipes through the gravel. You're gonna have some subsidence in soil, no matter what. But that's the place to have it, is in that green space. So my, I guess my question is, and this is, I don't.
How can we make that assumption? I'm sorry. Like, couldn't it be anywhere along the, the, the line?
But that line's all in the green space.
I'm sorry.
Is, is all along the green space.
The sidewalk actually crosses over top of the storm.
At the, at, towards east west highway. Yeah, and, yeah.
Uh, so you know, if there's an issue with the pipes, you know, there's a possibility that it'll be in the area where, for that crossing.
Right.
I mean, and the other thing, I guess, is in order to repair those pipes, hopefully have replaced them. You know, having the, the backhoe that they had to drive across to actually excavate down and see what the, what the issue was. Um, so I'm not sure how they would get that equipment to service their infrastructure.
Well, they go across our stuff and if they damage it, they'd have to fix it. So my, I guess my question, I, I, that's what I would really, before we decide whether or not to go forward is. What parts of this could we go forward with? That wouldn't be damaged by another seafowl in that green space.
I could probably, um, Irene, if I could jump in real quickly.
Sure, yeah.
I'm sorry, um, that's really gonna be very hard for the staff to tell you. I don't know if it's gonna be very easy for anyone to tell you, because we don't know where subsidence will occur in the future. Under the existing utility infrastructure that's under the park. And it's very unlikely that any utility will repair our assets. There are surface assets the way we um, construct them. They may put back, you know, just basic elements of our assets, sidewalks, et cetera. But it's really hard to say, I think, what subsidence will see in the future. And what improvements we make at grade will be impacted by that. I'm just not sure that we can opine on that. And I'm also not sure, certainly that I don't think we want to proceed with the underdrain system. That Joy was discussing and that is an element of the plan that has been proposed. Um, but given the subsidence we've seen in the park, uh, that would not be a wise decision to proceed with that. Since uh, further subsidence would impact that system at our cost. But I'm just not totally sure staff can tell you what, you know, what, what improvements can be made. And and what they're, you know, what, what impacts to them might be. Uh, what impacts might be from further subsidence of the land. I'm just not sure we can actually opine on that, Rich. I'm not, I don't think we can do that.
I'm, I, I, I guess I, maybe not the staff, but we, we know where the underdrains are, right? We know where those drains are.
We know where the.
We know where all the existing stuff is.
Yeah, there are many utilities crisscrossing that park, sixty, two sixty inch reinforced concrete pipes, sewer lines, water lines. I mean, it's just a mishmash of all utilities under, you know, behind the park in all locations.
I, I think that for the majority of those, those are in what would be, I call the green space. They're not along that sidewalk, except.
They are, they are along the sidewalk, yeah. Actually, W S S C's assets are directly along that sidewalk. And that's why they want to allow us to plant trees in that buffer area.
Well, that answers the question then. So that would, it would impact subsidence along that pipe would impact that sidewalk.
Possibly so. I just don't know if I can tell you definitively whether it would or not. I just don't know how those pipes are constructed. I think, I believe their original infrastructure. I don't know.
I agree. I, I think I agree with you that subside, if there's pipes there and they're typical construction where they've. You know, excavated out, put gravel down, put the pipe in. And they've run it, there's gonna be subsidence along, along that, just because of the infiltration of the soil into the gravel.
That's what, that's what our engineer suggested, actually, Rich. Yeah, Jason Azar said, you know, given the, the way there's, there's pipes are constructed. How that, how they've been put into the ground with travel surrounding them, that water traveling through that, you know. Along those pipes through that gravel is actually pulling the soil down and causing these subsidences, if you will. That's, if that's a term, subsidence.
Todd, I didn't, I didn't quite catch that. What's the reason for the subsidence?
There's a lot of water going through Zimmerman Parks. Zimmerman Park's in a floodplain and, you know, there's, there's certain capacity of the pipes underneath the park. But as we've seen through video and other, you know, anomalies, uh, greater than ten year storm events, Zimmerman Park is very flooded. So, so there's at surface soil erosion and there's also underground water that travels along the, the coarse stone. That surrounds these pipes and it pulls down the soil from the surface, causes these subsidences.
It pulls the stones. Pulls dirt as the water runs through, it gives soils on top of it. So if you put. You know, you run any kind, anything, the soil's gonna be carried away with it. So and, and, and then it, yeah, then it'll eventually collapse the top, the soil.
So you've got. Yeah, exactly.
But I, 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 my, my, my thought was that we knew enough about this, the infrastructure, that there may be some things there. That looked like that sidewalk that we could go ahead with. But what you're saying is there's, the W S S C pipes are there. So that, that's not doable either.
That's correct, yeah, that's correct.
Right, okay.
So the under, the drainage system that we were originally designing for, we could spend a lot of money installing that. And, and it would, you know, had another thirteen inches and, in sixty days. And, and could really be um, weakened. We could level the, the, just at the surface. Um, but again, if we get a storm like the river um, that happened eighteen months ago, two years ago. Um, on Maple, that could all be washed away. Uh, now, life is, could have, could have, should have, would have, you know. Um, but I'm just giving options in terms of, you know, what, what do we do? Um, the sidewalk, there's an issue, of course, and, you know. We were talking about farm women's market. Uh, we have a, we have some grant money from the state. We could direct it towards another amenity.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, my, my gut is, is that. Since the, the infrastructure there is such that we can't determine where the subsidence would be. That we're better left kind of keeping the, that, that area level and grassed. So the kids could play on it. I wa, I walked through it just to see where the sinkhole was. You know, and if we keep it level and grassed, it's a nice, it's a nice play area for kids.
Sure.
Um, and, you know, it may be washed away every couple of years, but we haul in some more dirt and throw down some grass.
Sure.
But it, I had no, I, I had no idea that the uh. That the amount of rain that came through there, you know, could have caused that to subside, but it did. And, and those kinds of storms are gonna happen. And, you know, there's no point of us building a lot of stormwater infrastructure there if it's gonna get taken out by, by these floods. First, I'm curious, what was the cost of the drainage as a component, drainage system?
The over grain, um, per trade was thirty thousand.
Thirty thousand dollars, okay. And the total project cost, refresh my memory, Todd, Dave, seven hundred?
Around four hundred and fifty.
Yeah, it was four hundred and fifty and, and when the state grant was going to be for?
Three, three twelve, if, uh, it's around, I think, our out of pocket cost without the state grant was like one twelve five.
Okay, well, my, my sense of this is that, and I wear the hat of some. Thinking about Zimmerman Park for seven and a half years. So, so I don't, I don't, I don't shift gears quite so readily. Uh, I, I think a lot of careful thought and a lot of work with residents, some of it very acrimonious. Uh, but ultimately resolved led to the plans we have. And I, I, I want to, I think, Rich, you've headed in a useful direction to separate out the. Grass area from the rest of the amenities. I, I'm just personally not so concerned about. The uh, the impact of flooding in the future on all the rest of the amenities. In other words, it might happen. So we rebuild the sidewalk. I mean, what, what's our capital budget every year, roughly?
Five hundred thousand.
Five hundred thousand?
Give or take, yeah, three, three to five normally.
I thought it was more than that. I thought. I thought well over a million, just because it was what I've been seeing for years for road.
Average doubt, it's, the average doubt, it's not, not much.
Okay, anyway, so if every few years we have to repair ten feet of sidewalk down there. I mean, I just don't see it as such a big deal or something that we should therefore back away from the whole project for. I think there are a lot of features about it that, that are really attractive, you know, continuing what we're calling the Scott Fosler Trail. Uh, and allowing people to, because we know how people have enjoyed the Zimmerman Park and, you know, have asked, sometimes asked the question. I have to continue on and stay in our, stay in this area underneath these trees and having a place for the table and, you know, the other few, the other few amenities. Uh, and I think uh, having the walkway out to the um. To, to the east west highway on that side where we're, we know there's gonna be a signal and kids are gonna probably start using that. So I think all that, we should stay the course and, and, and occasionally some repairs have to be made, we make them. I, I care relatively less. Oh, I do want to make one other observation about that. I've always been a little concerned about our taking down that existing, is it a hazelnut tree, the one with the fruit that's?
Sweet gum.
Okay, because it's quite a big tree. And I acquiesced to that or said, I rationalized to myself that that was okay. Because we'd be planting other trees. But if we cannot plant any other trees. I would like us to reconsider taking that down and maybe leave that up. It's what residents have had for a long time and they've lived with it. So I'm not personally concerned about, you know, having to take it down, but especially if we cannot replant anything. I think it'd be a better part of valor to leave that tree there. And uh, but, uh, and I guess I, I don't have a strong feeling about putting in those drains for thirty thousand dollars. But I can see that that may not have much utility, or at least that would be risky, or we would be inviting that to be torn up on a fairly periodic basis. So maybe that would be something we would take out of the project. But I, overall, I, I, I feel we should stay the course. And I also think that, that while your, your points remain, Irene, in terms of allocating budget. It's also the case that, that um, you know, this, this park serves a portion of the town. Which is relatively further away from the parks. They're being developed and there's something to be said about certain balance in what we're doing here. And that, this is something for residents in that pocket of the town. Uh, it's something that they've known about for a long time. They've welcomed, uh, with, once we. Made them less concerned about it becoming a dog park. Uh, so anyway, that's my instinct, that we stay the course. Uh, so I, anyway, that's my instinct that we stay the course substantially, um, uh, and uh. Just recognize that we may have some occasional repair work to do.
I have a question about the um, the fencing. I mean, I I guess Zimmerman Park isn't always flooded. And there are people who use it when it's not flooded. Um, when we went on the walk a couple of years ago, um. With residents, a number of the people who had small kids. Really wanted to have a fence there, you know, that kind of keeps kids from running out into east west highway. Would the um, I cannot interpret a map like this at all. Would, is the placement of where the pipes are, does and and risk of any flooding, would that jeopardize a fence? That, you know, where that is installed where we had originally planned to put it?
No. I mean, not, yeah, go ahead, Dave.
So I guess I'm. Listening to Barney, I'm I'm, you know, I get getting the cost numbers, we're only gonna have a hundred and twelve thousand five hundred invested in this.
It's still, you know, I can, I can. Residents saying, you know, wait a second here, especially in light of other comments made in in the last uh. Couple of weeks, um, where a hundred thousand dollars uh could could mean. Something else, so to towards us. So I uh.
Yeah, I have.
I I I I wonder if there's uh opportunity here, because we, you know, storms are becoming more more severe. Is there any downside to kind of phasing this a bit more? Um, not only to understand better what the usage would be. Um, but we we don't, you know, once you start, once you start fooling around with something like that, who knows what else is gonna come up? Um, is there any downside to thinking about phasing this a little bit?
No, we spent, we spent a lot of time with the residents on Zimmerman Park.
Yes.
We spent a lot of time.
Yes.
And we got comments from pretty much the good cross section of the.
Yes.
And they all like, I mean, this is where we ended up. And I'm still, I I'm still of the opinion that if we, if we do, if we could do stuff. Not in that area that we know is prone to subsidence. And if it's subsided there, that's probably where it's gonna subside again, but it's another. So i- if we looked at the other, i- if we looked at the infrastructure that we want to put in. What is our, what is our money risk of 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 doing that? And if it's not significant, I think, I I think the. The layout of the park that we envisioned. Was pretty nice. I mean, I I think people would would appreciate it. And um. Like I said, it's a hundred and twelve thousand five hundred dollars that we're gonna invest is. We spend, spent more on that. This year than on snow removal, so. And it's a, it's something that'll be there. I mean, it's not. And if we, i- if every four years we have a. Have an expense or every. Even every year, if you had an expense of twenty thousand to regrade the green space. There because it's subsided and all the other structure, all the other infrastructure wasn't damaged. I'd, I'd continue on. I mean, I think it's a good project.
Yeah, I guess I'm not as, um, I hear what you're saying. I guess I'm not as. Um, comforted that that the. Subsidance would only occur in the green area, in the green um, space area. It could, it could occur anywhere um, from from Dennis and.
Yeah, if we're talking twenty or thirty thousand dollars every year we have to spend. I'd go for that, to have that amenity.
And maybe we would figure out a way, if it keeps happening in the same area, we could probably figure out a way to reengineer the sidewalk, the passageway or whatever. I mean, I feel like, I also feel like we should go ahead with it because I think it's. I don't, I think it's uh. A little foolish to try to make decisions based on facts that we don't have. I mean, like, the facts that we do have in front of us or that. Gets a lot of rain, we've known that for a while, it, there was a subsidence. Recently, after a really, really significant amount of rain, we don't know going forward. When it's gonna happen again or where, so like in my mind, it just seems like an overreaction to scrap. The whole thing based on the vast amount of supposition that we have to make to. Try to figure out what the risk really is.
Yeah, and and I wasn't trying to scrap the whole thing as much as. Think about. We have decisions being made upstream in terms of, you know, purple line impacts. That um, and climate change that this this will be something that continues. It it's as though saying we're not gonna get rainfall, we're gonna go through.
But I think that that's kind of a statement that proves too much in a way, like that would suggest that we shouldn't invest in any infrastructure changes around here. Because of, because. Because we don't know.
I wouldn't, I that if it's.
Right, but we knew that, right? We knew it was a floodplain when we.
And that's what, hopefully they designed.
Right.
Knowing that it was a flood.
Right, and that's why we talked about the on, the the drainage system and and all that, but but. If. Obviously, if you all feel.
If we did not put in the. Other French drain, what is, what are we actually called? Is that what the strains are? If we didn't put them in. Uh, we just did the regrading and I think the the area is being smook over and raised. Will that in itself improve the speed of drying?
Uh, it will, um.
That's one of the concerns the residents.
Standing water, it's close to the east west highway, um, and the idea is that the grading will be done to make sure that that has positive flow.
So I guess what I'm wondering is, uh, if we did the grading and raise the level a bit, would that. Get us fifty percent of the way there in terms of speeding the drying of the land? Which case. If we didn't do the French drains because. We think there could be future subsidence and we don't want to have that destroyed, we nonetheless would still. Improve the drainage somewhat just by virtual raising and regrading plant.
I'd say, yeah, I don't know. I don't know if we can opine on that. We probably would have to get Jason to.
The other, the the, the other thing is that if. I mean, if you did go ahead and put the store, the the uh, French drains in. We did, the only, the only area that subsided. Was a certain area where the W S S, I guess the county or the county came out. Doug, I didn't know they put concrete, I mean, I didn't know they did. Something there, um, but um. You know, the last time, e- except for this year when we had the thirteen inches. And it it causes subsidence, we've had. Eighteen months ago, the storm created a river down. Down Leland and and Maple. And it, nothing subsided. There was no subside after that one, so my, I I would be, I. You know, I would hate to throw this project out because. Of the potential for something happening. When we really don't know if we, when we put these improvements in, whether it's going to help that situation or not. And it looked, hopefully the engineers designed it so that it would help it. We'd get better drainage, we'd get. Better sloping of the stuff and so um. Yeah, I'm I'm becoming more convinced we ought to.
What happens? Basically gravel, certain number of inches underneath the soil. I'm sorry.
But it's not a pipe like you're, i- it's a, it's a drainage pipe, it's made to to get the wa- to absorb the water.
I mean, there are holes in it.
There are holes in it, so that it takes the water and channels, yeah, yeah.
I guess the question is, what if, let's just imagine future events, subsidence if we have to drink, what, how big a deal would it be to. Repair the French drains that could, what could happen, what what, how big a deal is it to repair something?
Again, I hope we can answer that for you, Barney, I just.
But the cost, the the cost, he said, was thirty thousand dollars for it.
For the whole system.
For the system.
You know, it depends on many factors, the 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 degree of subsidence, you know, how much it impacts the underground's drainage system. It just, I I I don't know if we can opine on that.
Well, would it be worth um, asking Jason to revisit the plan? And given what has happened. You know, what would he recommend if we wanted, because when it dries out, there are people who are still gonna use it. Right, there's still, there's still gonna be kids playing there. Um, there are still gonna be people who walk through there, um, when it's not flooded. Um, and it does seem to be flooded quite frequently, but that doesn't keep you from, you know, walking along the perimeter. Um. Could we ask Jason to revisit it? In light of what has just happened and ask him for a recommendation?
Sure, we can.
And also in light of just, you know, we got these permits, but there's. Conditions on them, what that actually means too, because the removal of some trees, but then the planting of others, but the planning can't take place. So what does that do in terms of absorption? Um. Uh, just so that. There was the plan and then it's like, well, this is what ultimately has been approved, which is slightly different.
I did, Jason, actually, I I've conferred with Jason since this subsidence has occurred and. Um. Of course, you know, Jason. E- even as a civil engineer can't really opine on what's gonna happen in the future with. Further land subsidence, but he did explain to me why it was occurring and there's also. Um, surface erosion occurring because Zimmerman isn't a floodplain. He he did say. There is an option to to bring in fill soil, regrade, try to achieve some positive drainage. Um. And potentially, you know, put in the sidewalk if you'd like to do that and phase it in a way that. Potentially would not be impactful of. The underdrain system that's contemplated. Um. But he actually said at the end of the call, you know, it's really up to the council to decide how much they want to chance it and how much it will cost in the future to fix it.
And I guess, I I I, none of this changes my mind, I just feel like. There there were, there's, there's always, there's, at the end of the day, this means to me that there's probably some additional maintenance for this park that might otherwise have been the case. And and um, uh, if it's, if it's useful to ask whoever Jason to come back and give us some, some of his further thinking, say at the next session. About any redesign thought, you know, he might want to propose, I'm fine with that. But I'm not eager just to see us kick this can down the road and not make decisions or just not, not do it. Um, so if there's useful. Further con- conversation that would give people assurance or answer questions and we need another month for that, I'm okay with that. But. You know, in principle, I feel that. Um. You know, the project makes good sense, it's something residents want, we spent a lot of time on it. Um, I don't, uh, you know, I don't know how often a subsidence might happen, but. You know, if occasionally we have to repair a sidewalk, so be it. Uh, and potentially if we have to repair some drains, so be it, but I don't see any of that as compelling for us. Given our budget, our wealth, our reserves, I mean, this isn't gonna strain anything. And I do think it's an amenity that that the residents in that part of the town are, have been expecting to get. I don't, I I honestly don't know how I could just suddenly say. As a council member, well, we saw a subsidence, so we're. You know, we're not gonna do any of this. I I just don't find that an answer that makes me at all comfortable. And nor even phasing, I don't, I mean, I, it's, the risk is a risk, it's, it's not gonna change by doing it in two years instead of a single year.
You know, I I, you you, looking at it as a risk, I I would like to see the cost, risk, benefit ratio. Done here. I mean, I, it seems to me that what we're saying is, I. I was thinking it was, it would be much more expensive, much more expensive. But if we're talking in the range of thirty to fifty thousand dollars of potential, um. Repairs every year and a half or two years. That's not a reason for me to abandon this project, it's just not, it's not significant enough, so. I I I would like to see if 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 Jason could. Could look at it and see and say, look, you know, the chances are, not the chances, but it. Even if we had to take the section out of uh. Of the sidewalk between east west highway. That's a sidewalk repair and it maybe would cost you fifteen, twenty thousand dollars. That's a risk I'd be willing to take, and so I I I'd just like to get some, some feels. As Joy said, you know, what what are the things that are. Least risky and what are the things that are most risky and what what dollar value would you put on the things that are most risky?
Sure, without objection, last day to set up a meeting with Jason Azar, the March twentieth meeting, so we can discuss this further.
Yeah.
With it, with a view that we'll try to come to some decision the next council meeting, is that?
Well, we would kind of have to.
Shovel ready by March twentieth, so it's, it's not, it's not delaying the project at all.
Okay, thank you, Todd. All right.
Thank you. Um, next topic is the Corso Chevy Chase, there's not much to report there, the the uh, hearing was moved. For just a technical reason from last Thursday to tomorrow. Um, I uh, I will be going in person to to testify. Um, and the uh, you guys have seen the testimony.
Very good testimony, so thank you.
M M L legislative updates.
And beyond, I mean, there's a, there's a lot going on, um, there there. Was a hearing or there will be an upcoming hearing on the um, the speed camera legislation, which. Has been uh, at the top of the list of M M L, um, doesn't really regard us in any way. There's been a discussion of, you know, quite a number of bills that. Again, regard other municipalities, um, I don't think they bear a mention here. Our greatest concern, of course, is the um, the housing bill, um, and I think that's where we should focus. Most of our energy with um, the M M L Legislative Committee as well as um, our own delegation.
So, um, actually Todd pointed this out to me, there's, like, M M L sends out a kind of a. Chart that shows, here's the um, legislative, here's the number, the legislation. And then M M L's uh, opinion, position, thank you, but there's no like further information. So if it says yes with conditions or something like that, we don't know what those conditions are. Has there been any discussion about offering a link so that there's just a little bit more information, one level lower as to like what? What the conditions might be. I mean, I understand approve or oppose, but um, just wondering.
That seems to be, you know, a standard operating procedure, um, that because, you know, while we're discussing all of the bills. That are um, before the General Assembly, they might mention that M A C O, which is the M M L, the county equivalent of M M L. Will say, well, they're approving this with amendments or they're, they're supporting this with amendments. Um, I think um, that's, those amendments, because they could be negotiated or not, something that they would want to put in writing for the full. For the whole world to see, um. There's often quite a lot of horse trading, and if you can imagine, you know, among municipalities, you know, at least within our state. And I'm sure this is probably true in a number of states, you. You know, urban municipalities have, you know, very different, uh, considerations than, uh, rural municipalities. And, um, you don't, you're not trying to like, you know, we might be fighting for different kinds of amendments as well. Whereas we might just say, yes, in general, MML supports that housing bill. They're not going to go against it, but the, the sausage making in terms of what amendments actually get put forward and, and advocated for is, I think it's always a work in progress.
What does watch mean?
I don't know.
Okay, because some of them are, are.
Oh, oh, that, that just means that they're not taking a position yet. They're just watching whether, you know, okay, this is something that we've decided. We're not taking no position and we're not supporting, we're just watching to see if it has any impact. Because there's a lot of bills that have no impact at all.
Yes.
On municipalities.
Okay. Um, okay. Any questions at all on the state front?
Let's add one last thing about, about Corso, going back to a moment. Thank you for all your following up on this, because, by the way, going back to my past years, we never paid any attention to MML. And you're proving that that was probably a bad thing, bad decision. We just felt life was too short. We had too many other things to do. Oh, MML, but thank you. The, but also, on Corso, I just want to reflect on how much work, you know, you know, Todd, Dave, Talbert, Special Committee, those of us on the council have done over the past four ye- what, three years? How else to go back, Todd? I remember you giving me a call, one of my, I think the second year I was mayor, saying, guess what, Barney, guess what's going to be on the soul here? And, and, uh, it's just been an enormous amount of work, uh, thinking through all these issues and consultations and of course, a certain amount of acrimony with some of the residents, but working through that. Uh, and the letters and the work with the developers and, you know, all the binding, uh, conditions. There's just a huge amount behind, you know, the testimony that Irene, you're going to be giving tomorrow. Uh, and it's, you know, it's just, it's just been, it's been a big effort. It really has, yeah. And I know what's left will still be the construction agreement.
Yeah.
And obviously finalization with S H A to make sure we get the signalization. But those are two discreet pieces of work, uh, and we trust, you know.
They've been a great partner. I mean, we, I think we're, town is, this is good, good project. So.
Um, if we could go from the sublime to the ridiculous for just one moment on the Corso topic. I was, I was noticing in addition to some of my own observations about the state of the property right now and the sidewalk around it, then on the listserv, there have been a couple of people noting that they've picked up like needles and broken glass and things like that on the, on the sidewalk um, that surrounds, that surrounds the.
On Thornapple or on, on Connecticut?
Uh, Thorn, Thornapple. So I don't know if it's worth raising with the current developers or, but.
It's a town sidewalk.
It's a town sidewalk.
I thought it was Connecticut that was not, not Thornapple that was the issue.
Yeah, we've had a complaint about litter along Thornapple.
Yeah. That's what I thought. Okay. I just, I just wanted to make sure somebody was tracking it because I've also noted a lot of garbage disposed in those woods too.
All right. Well, any other comments on other topics? And I think we are adjourned. Thank you very much.